The discussion. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting, a virtual meeting hosted at our virtual City Hall. It is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, and it is 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clufus. Councilmember Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff. Councilmember Howell.
Here.
Cuff's on two, right?
Okay. Before we move to Agenda Item Number D, which will be a presentation of the discussion and updates on COVID-19, our communications officer wanted to play a wrap-up video of the Feed Palm Coast Initiative. So just want to really send a huge thanks to all of the collaborative partnerships that actually came together in one moment for our residents. And also want to thank this entire city organization who frankly worked tirelessly to ensure that every box was sorted and counted and distributed and volunteered that day. And I think everyone in this community should be very proud of not only the city organization, but the many volunteers that really came together in extraordinary way, in extraordinary times, to help so many in need. And so, thank you to everyone. So Discussion, Agenda Item Number D is a presentation of discussion and updates on COVID-19. Have our World Chief, will you be, or is Captain Esconi, which?
You'll have us both, Mayor. I'll start off with an update on what the phasing is of the first phase of the opening of the state, and then Captain Esconi will bring you up to speed on what we're doing locally. So are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Mr. Morton. Thank you for this opportunity to bring you up to speed. Early on and throughout this pandemic, federal and state administration has focused on flattening the curve, protecting our most vulnerable citizens, and ensuring access to testing hospital sites to ensure that they were under capacity. Governor DeSantis did not take a one-size-fits-all approach to mitigating the threat of closing the state, and in turn, he also didn't take a one-size-fits-all to reopen. During the final weeks of April, the state saw a downgrade trajectory of emergency department visits for influenza-like and COVID-like illnesses. So in early March, flu-like symptoms went from 15,000 to just over 2,000 a month later. So the COVID-like symptoms in the emergency department went from 11,000 visits down to 2,700 visits in the same timeframe. Statewide, Florida had seen the percent of new positive cases steadily decrease since the peak in early April. And Florida and here in Flagler, expanding test sites are providing more data for better decision-making. So when opening up the state into Phase One, the government did not open it with a requal and could cause COVID cases to rise dramatically. It is a planned and methodical method to ensure that there is no drastic rise, and those vulnerable are still protected. So Phase One should be based on the benchmarks provided on the roadmap for reopening, which includes downward trajectories, as spoken earlier. We're going to look at symptoms of surveillance, which is to provide the data and analytical tools needed to identify outbreaks or unusual trends more rapidly. What we're seeing in Flagler and Palm Coast as their testing is, there's a large group of people getting tested and they're still finding positive results. That's not bad information, that's actually very good information. And as we're finding out, the percentage of people that are showing positive are consistently in the same numbers. We're just identifying those folks more relevant. Epidemiology and outbreak decline, the objective of monitoring this data is to ensure that the state is managing the spread of COVID and employing effective mitigation measures. So if they realize that there's areas within the state that's starting to see a rise, they're going to send better resources and more personnel to deal with those problems. Healthcare capabilities, data about the hospital and capacity readiness shows whether the healthcare system is ready to respond to an event if an unexpected surge of COVID-19 illness arises. They want to make sure that there's additional facilities to handle an outbreak if there is one. There's enough PPE available for the responders and the people treating, that there's an adequate supply chain available that can provide enough resources over a period of time to deal with that. And then they're also going to work on testing. As the state opens, the amount of testing should further expand so that the local health officials can adequately monitor the prevalence of the virus within their communities. So as we look at the response in general, it's still been broken down into individuals' and employers' responsibilities. The individuals are still the protection of vulnerable population. Anybody who is over the age of 65 or has a serious underlying condition should continue to stay home. When leaving home, these individuals should follow social distancing and other general mitigation guidelines. And those living with vulnerable individuals should be aware of the exposure risk that they could carry the virus back home after returning from work. A judicial point is, if anybody is having people over to their house to do work on any projects or anything around the house, they should be aware that they're going into a home with a person of age or who has a medical condition, and they should be assessed. The vulnerable population should be affirmative, informing their employers that they are a member of that population so that their employer can plan accordingly. Captain Esconi will probably speak on that later on in his presentation. Social gatherings, maximize your distances from others in public, particularly in enclosed environments. Individuals should avoid socializing in groups of more than 10. And travel, individuals should avoid nonessential travel cruises, including the United States and cities outside of Florida with substantial community spread of COVID-19. As for employers, continue to telework. They should encourage teleworking where practical, and employers should develop plans for employees to return to work in phases, which should be implemented in subsequent phases of SMART, Safe, Smart, and Step-by-Step planning. Employee screenings, all employers should screen employees before entering the premises for symptoms of COVID or flu-like symptoms. Where practical, the temperature of each employee should be taken. And as far as travel, employees should avoid nonessential travel to adhere to CDC guidelines. Local government meetings, any kind of in-person forum for local government bodies to meet should remain suspended, and to use technology and video conferencing for local government meetings are encouraged. Other aspects, bars, host nightclubs that derive 50% of their sales from alcohol should also remain closed, and restaurants and food establishments should operate at no more than 25% capacity with the appropriate social distancing and minimum six-foot separation. Large venues such as movie theaters, concert halls, auditoriums, bowling alleys, playhouses are still to remain closed. And as these practices are put into place and the assessments made statewide, we should see an expansion of Phase One to open other areas that have not been included in the original order. This is going to be a day-by-day assessment, a week-by-week assessment. And as we start to open up and we see that there's no amount of the virus or spike again, the governor is probably going to open up a little bit more as we go. Captain Esconi, want to add anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Morton. Captain Esconi, Captain, Fire Department. As of today, we have 37,439 total cases in the state of Florida. 141 of those cases are here in Flagler County and using the Department of Health, a website with the zip code tracker, 109 cases are in the City of Palm Coast. We've had 15 hospitalizations, and unfortunately, we have four fatalities. To date, when we talk about testing, we've had 1,804 total tests reported in Flagler County through our local Department of Health. That's 1.56% of our total population in the county. This week, Palm Coast firefighters have been assisting with the testing site at Daytona State College. And today, we were able to test 143 people at that site. And that site has, and totally tested 1,119 people since it's been open. We've had a decline in percentage of the positive cases per day since April 24, with the exception of one day. And that was due to a large backlog of testing, and that data was all published at one time, so it gave us a small spike. But the state is trending downward day by day. As a city, we're doing many things to assist with the governor's recent orders, as well as CDC's recommendation. Citizens will see many city staff wearing face masks in public when six-foot social distancing is difficult to apply with. We have, as an organization, have started employee test, temperature testing and monitoring daily, and some shifts like fire departments monitoring their temperatures twice a day. Mayor Holland has created another initiative, walking back Palm Coast, and happy to say we're working with local businesses to come up with creative ways to increase outdoor seating, to help them increase their revenues. Additionally, we've opened certain parks and trails, we're encouraging proper social distancing, and we strongly recommend the use of face masks in public. We have a team of city staff working on a reopening plan that was very similar to what was released earlier in the week. This team is following Governor DeSantis's three-phase approach to reopen the state, and this team will meet later with the city manager to discuss our future plans together. We stay calm and stay safe, we can go through those. Thank you.
So, thank you for that. Council, I'm going to open it up to just any questions you have for emergency management team thus far. Councilmember Branquino, did you have any?
Not at this point, not at this moment, no.
Council, Vice Mayor Clufus?
Hey, good evening. I would just like to ask if we are assisting, or our emergency services are assisting the distribution of masks to residents, or whether we're planning on making any progress in that direction? I've been asked by a few of residents on where the best place for them to get masks is, and whether or not, one person even mentioned that City Hall, someone had told them City Hall was distributing them, I hadn't heard that exactly.
Yes, sir. We have been accepting donation of masks, and we've been giving them out to local businesses. We've identified local retail box stores as a priority, and then restaurants that are doing delivery to ensure that their employees are safe. So we have started that program probably two weeks ago at this point.
Got it. Okay. Appreciate it.
And I'd just like to add that at our food drive this past Saturday, 5,000 masks were distributed to those that received food distribution.
Nice.
Does that conclude your questions at this time?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I'm sure that the distribution of the massive food drive is kind of where we got completed, so I appreciate it. Great job distributing my best masks.
That was a generous donation that came in from a local resident that made that contribution, so it was much appreciated. Any other? Just like to add as well, you know, I really appreciate the approach by our emergency management team. Chief, do you want to just highlight who is on that team and the years of experience they have collectively that has helped guide us through this process?
Well, to begin with, Deputy Chief Clark, who has more than 35 years in emergency management and is a fire chief in other parts of the state and country. You might be familiar with Oklahoma City bombing. He was there for that. He was in the Panhandle for hurricanes. He was working at the state level every time that there was an activation. So Deputy Chief Clark is phenomenal with logistics and planning. Also on that team, we've got the three county chiefs, Kyle Berryhill, Sean Major, and Gary Potter. They're all working on daily briefings and assignments for both logistics and staffing. And Captain Esconi, who has been on the forefront of this from Phase One, has done a phenomenal job. And again, I've said this in early meetings, but this is right in his wheelhouse where you're missing, makes a contingency response with medical challenges. And I think having that consistent person at the helm for a event like this is instrumental in how successful that we've been operating at. Then you start coming down on the lines, and you've got everybody that's on the crew that run to the calls every day. And after, this is the 50th day that we saw an incident action plan from the county come out, and for 50 days, these folks have been going out delivering the best service that they can, knowing full well their PPE is the only thing keeping them from becoming sick. So everybody who is in the station who is planning something, is part of the organization of coming up with ideas, has been a very, very active member of our team in making move forward. All the while we're doing this, we're still running calls, we're still going to fire calls, we're still picking folks up off the floor. The daily rush still goes on. This is just something that, in addition to what we normally do, we've got this group of professionals that have done this. Sean Major has entered his 25th year this year, and he's entering the drop program, so we've got five more. Kyle Berryhill has been here for 16 years, and Chief Potter has also been here for the better part of about 12. And I think, Captain Esconi, you've been here for 22?
Yes.
All right, 22 years. So we definitely do not show our youth in this, but we've got some good growth, rings growing here, and we're doing really well.
You know, and I can appreciate that. The reason why, you know, I think that's important to note to our residents is, you know, this has been a very methodical, well-thought-out, strategic process that not only included our first responders that have years and years of experience responding to emergencies and crisis moments. It's been a partnership with the Flagler County Health Department, Advent Hospital System, Flagler County Emergency Management, and I think it's been one that the numbers are what they are is because I really believe our residents not only were able to take this moment serious in our community, but they heeded this very important advice to stay home to help mitigate the spread of this very deadly virus. So I applaud everyone involved, and it's nice to see so many different stakeholders come together in the best interest of the health and safety of our community and our residents, which is always a top priority for this council. And I'd also like to add, I know we have some fatigue going on, right, with, you know, our residents that are looking to get out and get out quickly. This is a process we will follow with the governor's executive order, his reopening order, and will continue to follow and track that. Understand that Palm Coast residents still fall in with a majority of population at high-risk residents. And Advent Health has even stated that even in their hospital network, Palm Coast is the highest percentage of at-risk demographic per any hospital in their hospital system per population. So we do fall into this category that when we make these decisions, they're not in a vacuum, but rather one that looks at, you know, sort of what we're facing, what we're dealing with. We have a lot of assisted living facilities that are residential, we have some commercial assisted living facilities, and it's been a tremendous effort by all to get to this point. We want to continue to ask our residents to be patient, be diligent, continue to do their part. They all play a role in our health of our community, and to keep our first responders as safe as possible, certainly during this time period. So I've been very proud of the approach of our emergency management team with the recommendations. They worked really hard, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could just add one more point is, the folks in the city government that we work with in Palm Coast have been phenomenal, the directors, the deputy directors, and the staff. Just last week, I asked for a volunteer from each department to work with Captain Esconi on establishing what their plan would be, and within 40 minutes, we had 10 names from different departments that are all working with them. I know emergency management can be scary, it could be that elusive group of people that tell you what you have to do, but what's great about our organization is these folks come together when we need to, and when you have to present a problem, a solution, they come up with a lot of solutions, and makes our job a lot easier. So I'd like to thank the departments for helping out. And I know going into the recovery phase or the post-disaster phase of this is where we get challenged, and that's where we're going to be tested in the public eye. If we don't finish this properly, and we don't follow through properly, that's what will be judged upon, not how we got here, but what happens afterwards. And there's a lot of the other departments, like community development and arson rec that are going to be going through, how-tos, and what we have to do from this point on. And we will be happy to help everybody along, just to make sure that the opening is smooth.
Matt, did you have anything to add?
No, just very proud of all the work that's occurring, and as Chief Forte, oh, sorry, I almost demoted you, as Chief Forte pointed out, you know, it's just been great to see the team come together, as they always do, you know, and this is no exception. We have a phenomenal staff team, and just very thankful, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for the update. We'll continue to hear up-to-date current information from our communication team as well, so thank you. Agenda Item Number E is public participation. The public participation is reserved for those at the beginning of the meeting, prior to calling in with your comments. If you're watching the meeting from your website or through YouTube, please mute your devices in order for there to be no interference. If you would like to participate in public comments, please call 386-223-1690. You will need to hit *9 to raise your hand to provide your comments. Seeing no public participation, we will move to Agenda Item Number F2, which is approval of the minutes of the City Council for April 21st, 2020 Business Meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Virginia, if you'll do roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Branquino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cuff?
Aye.
Councilmember Howell?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number G, which is Proclamations, a proclamation for our Public Works Week, May 17th through the 23rd, 2020. I have asked our city manager to read this proclamation to recognize his outstanding team in Public Works and recognize all their efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again for the opportunity to read the Public Works proclamation. And before I read it, I just want to tell a brief story about the exceptional professionalism and dedication of our Public Works team. They're the unsung heroes that keep the city looking clean and beautiful, and the pipes and the pumps and a lot of the hard work that we take for granted. Recently, we had a project out at the waterfront park pier, and it was going to be some pier replacements. Upon seeing this project, it was engineered, designed for a budgeted bid of around $100,000. The special projects team at Public Works took a look at that, and this is one they really believe they could accomplish in-house out of savings to the city. The crews worked together with our engineering teams, and in fact, were able to complete that project in-house for $12,000. That was an $88,000 saving. So while that's not possible on every project, I just applaud them. Again, I think that exemplifies the spirit of this proclamation and the dedication and actual compassion that our Public Works team has for our city, and that's very inspiring to me. So with that, thank you, Public Works team. And whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Palm Coast, whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without all the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Palm Coast to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas this year's theme, The Rhythm of Public Works, is a tribute to the Public Works employees who have made a commitment to our communities, now therefore be proclaimed by the Mayor and the Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, at May 17th, 2020 through May 23rd, 2020, as Public Works Week by Mayor Melissa Holland.
Well, thank you so much for reading that. Matt, does he want to make a comment about your team and all of the hard work that they're not only currently engaged and involved with, but continue to be?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Morton, those kind words and the opportunity to recognize Public Works Week. So when I found out that the American Public Works Association had made, you know, that week the Public Works appreciation, I really wanted to do some outstanding events for our professionals within the department to celebrate all the work that they do every day for our citizens. Unfortunately, as we all know, current circumstances mean we have to be creative, and what we can do, but I can promise, and I know some of them are on the line listening today, so I hope me to it, that once we're able to, we'll have a proper celebration and recognize all the folks for your hard work. I would like to tell just a brief story, and I know some of you have heard it from me in the past, but I've been with the city now for around seven months, and when I first accepted the position, we drove through off of Highway 95 onto Palm Coast Parkway. My family and my in-laws were in the car, and I remember my father-in-law commenting on how beautiful the grass was in the median. A little did I know that the professionals that I'd be working with were responsible for making it so and keeping it so, and the amount of pride that they take every day in the work that they do, you know, to accomplish that. And, you know, I think the medians are definitely something that's very visible, but all of the work that they do behind the scenes, whether it's the special projects, whether it's the facilities maintenance, the outstanding fleet maintenance personnel we have that keep a very large vehicle fleet in service for our city every day, to our landscape crews that everyone knows. that, that everyone knows and adores. It's been a pleasure so far to be a part of the team and I look forward to watching all the outstanding things that they continue to do and I'm just humbled to be a part of that cause. So thank you, thank you to the Public Works professionals and we will celebrate, I promise.
Thank you so much for your leadership and I would just like to add, you know, interesting story, years ago, I would remember having conversations with my father about those medians and, you know, why we put such amount of effort into that. And, and his statement was, you only have one chance to make a really good first impression. So I'm glad to hear that that was your impression because that is a lasting impression and it's what our residents have really been part of why they chose Palm Coast. Frankly, it's, it's the quality of life, it's the, not only the amenities, but really how it's kept and there's a sense of pride in that. And oftentimes, frankly, our Public Works teams do not get enough credit or thanks for that. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. I appreciate each and every one of them and make sure you send our thanks to all of them.
I just want to add that I want to thank you guys for the work you do and let the boys and girls at the Public Works know that I'm very proud of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move to agenda item number H, which is resolutions. H4 is a resolution approving a federally funded sub-award and grant agreement with Florida Department of Emergency Management relating to COVID-9 pandemic expenses.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Tonight, before you, is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign. This is from the Department of Homeland Security FEMA and has made available to us through the Florida Division of Emergency Management, a grant for measures related to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. To date, the city's expended approximately $112,000 towards that effort. This is simply the grant agreement approval that the mayor and council need to approve and the mayor needs to sign and will allow us to begin and continue the reimbursement request and grant receipt awards.
Okay. Counsel, are there any questions or discussion on this agenda item? Any member of the public wish to make public participa-, wish to make public comment on this agenda item, please call 386-223-1690. Hit star nine to raise your hand to provide your comments. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Virginia, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes four, five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number H5 is a resolution approving a master price agreement with Power Plus Controls for the purchase of variable frequency drives for potable water supplies and wells.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. In keeping with the council's goals and objectives to ensure all infrastructures are priority, especially regarding maintenance and performance, the utility department has identified there are need to replace approximately 20 old worn pressure sustaining valves. The proposal is to replace them with variable frequency drive units. VFDs or variable frequency drive units are a much more advanced way to operate. These will be in respect to water plant number one. They provide a greater benefit because they can control the amount of pressure and electricity sent to each pump. That makes them more efficient, makes them, hopefully last longer, but also makes them more cost-effective and there is less maintenance per drive hour on each pump. So again, this is a recommendation and approval to purchase 20 variable frequency drive pumps. And based on our successful performance, again, back to Public Works and utilities crews, we've been able to successfully install those ourselves. So we were going to save $6,000 off the installation cost by doing that work in-house.
Counsel, any questions or discussion on this agenda item?
No.
Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number five, please call 386-223-1690. Please hit star nine to raise your hand to provide your comments. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Virginia.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Branquino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number H6 is a resolution approving piggybacking the GSA services or contract with Colter Ventures LLC, DBA Rogue Fitness for fitness equipment.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor. Very proud of the fire department for proactively looking for opportunities. We are required to train and provide training and of course, that is also a prudent thing to do. This is both physical training as well as empowering our employees to make better exercise, diet and life choice decisions. This is a federally approved grant. The city has to contribute approximately 10%. So what this works out to be is a contribution of around $14,000 for $156,000 worth of training and equipment. Again, the grant award is for $156,216. Of that, $60,000 is allocated towards new and improved equipment for exercise and training and approximately $96,000, excuse me, $60,000 towards equipment and $96,000 towards continued training. The equipment will be purchased on an as-needed basis as we design that program and is going to be executed through this piggyback contract. It will all be reimbursed through this fire department grant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
Over right now.
Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number H6, please do so at this time by calling in at 386-223-1690. You will need to hit the star nine to raise your hand to provide your comments. I'll close public comment. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
There a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Virginia.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Aye.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number H7 is a resolution approving a contract with Hazen Construction LLC for the sewer force main extension project from wastewater treatment, treatment plant one to Blair Castle.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. This is a proposed force main extension for the city's wastewater treatment plant number one. As you mentioned, to Blair Castle Drive, it is part of our approved utility capital improvement plan. This project proposes to install approximately 2,000 feet of 16-inch force main pipe and it will actually parallel and leave existing the 12-inch force main that runs from Blair Castle Drive through to wastewater treatment plant one, up to the piping and the headworks. This will actually help us increase our flow capacity and better handle our wastewater flows. We've had issues before in significant rain events with possible overflows and heavy rainfall events. So this will help ameliorate that condition and also reduce pump runtimes at the stations, allowing us for greater efficiency. And again, leaving this existing force main, since the capacity in both is needed, will give us redundancy for future repairs and work. So it's a great complement and good design project. The staff internally prepared the design and plans for the bidding manual and this is accommodated in the source of funds worksheet from wastewater collection, sanitary sewer force mains line item.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
No.
Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment, please do so at this time by calling You will need to hit star nine to raise your hand to provide your comments. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Now open it up to agenda item number I, which is public participation. Any member wish to make public comment, please do so at this time by calling in 386-223-1690. You will need to hit star nine to raise your hand to provide your comments. We will close public comment. Oh.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Sue Urban. I am a member of Flagler County Mental Health and Wellness Advocate. I would like to know why there is continued division between the city and working with mental health. We work out difficult times and work very hard to try and support city and government and we'd like to know why there's such a division and why we're constantly being threatened to have our vehicles towed or to leave public spaces, being told to leave public events. We're trying very, very hard during a very difficult time where mental health is extremely important. As we see a downside in this COVID numbers, we're going to see an upline of mental health issues, suicide attempts, suicide Baker Act. And we want to be here for our community to make sure that their needs are being met for their mental health. It's just as important as their physical health. They can reach out for help. There's many ways to do that. I'm not going to use this as a public forum to do that. I also want to say thank you to our first responders and to the emergency teams that have worked tirelessly to protect the citizens of Palm Coast. You are greatly appreciated and we support you 100%. Thank you for all that you're doing. Mayor Holland, I want to thank you for putting together the food distribution. That was an amazing event. I was so happy to see so many people come out and get help and make sure that you guys were supported, that we provided that so our members knew that you were doing it and the residents, you made it out to the event. At this time, I will end my three minutes.
Thank you for your comments.
Matt, I would just ask to put them also in contact, I, I know there's a new mental health program going on with the county, providing that service and connection for people, Flagler Connects, I think it is. So if you can just make sure they have some information as well, I think that's just launched last week from my understanding and, and that would be a, a great time to hear a little bit more about that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Branquino.
Oh, here I go again. No. Just a couple of things. The other day, I went to the firehouse to meet with Chief Forte and just to note, these people is taking, they're taking this serious. First of all, they would not let me in until I get my temperature. They almost checked me up and down, make sure that I wasn't sweating or anything. Actually, you, everybody had a mask, nobody had shoes on, just those slippers and everything. They're taking this very serious. So I'm proud of you guys and thank you for what you did there. Also, Mayor, Feed Palm Coast Initiative, it takes the village to help people. I just basically started with an idea, new, then goes to the staff and goes to the donors, then the volunteers and finally the people that actually need. This is, this is challenging times, challenging times and we see that it's challenging. I saw some of the people there that I know, I know them personally and they, they were grateful. They were grateful for what took place. 3,000 families. It shows that there was a need, but most of all, it shows that we care. The people that actually brought food here, they really care. I was so proud of them too. It was, I, I don't know, I don't know about everybody else, but more than anything else, with all due respect, I was proud of the volunteers, the givers, the kindness that they showed by coming here and bringing food. Okay? We never know tomorrow. I may be in their shoes. I don't know. So I'm very pleased of what took place. That was a good initiative. I commend you for that. And maybe you should be one of the persons who eventually, one day, will commend you for, well, the good work. And that's, that's basically it for the day. Just kudos for everybody and don't, once again, I can't go home without thanking the staff. Everybody, everybody, my colleagues too, for the patience and what they're doing. It's phenomenal. They just, I'm so proud of everybody, to be honest. That's it.
I conclude your comments. Thank you. Vice Mayor Clufus?
Thank you. I would just like to echo exactly what Councilman Branquino said. I won't lag on it, but everyone's doing a phenomenal job and I'm thankful that we have a city full of staff who are still wanting to get out there and do the extra initiatives. Also, the testing sites are being running incredibly well, so I'd like to thank all the first responders, but also all the frontline workers who are out there in our community making sure that individuals who need us are able to get them reliably and safely. And I'm just hopeful that the turnaround time on the results continues to pick up and that we can stay vigilant for a long enough time while we continue to push the numbers down. So thank you, Mayor and Council, but thank you very much to staff and the, and the frontline workers. My hat's off to you.
Thank you. Thanks for staying safe too. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. Dog is there?
No one's in the game.
Okay. I just, you know, would like to add to that again, please continue to follow all of the not only suggested requirements, you know, during this time period, but we have a lot of people that are working diligently. I'm also proud that, that we have not had any disrupted services throughout this entire process. So we continue to, to deal with permitting and approval processes, our customer service department that's working primarily from home, staying safe, but responding to our residents' concerns and calls and deploying the resources, you know, necessary. So this goes to every single department. You know, Matt continues to update us as a council and, and he is nothing but high praise for every single department in this organization that is just working tirelessly. So please be patient, you know, I, I will say, our, our Parks and Rec department has probably had a, one of the greatest impacts as far as closures and, and I know Lauren and her team are actively engaged with our, our chief and our emergency management team in an effort to try to reopen as quickly and safely as possible. But, you know, let's just try to continue to show that, that kindness and that patience throughout that. We all want to get reopened. There's not a single one of us that does not want to see that happen. However, you know, we are and remain in the middle of a global pandemic that frankly, it's the first of its kind in 106 years. So we have to continue to be mindful of that. We have to continue to, to make sure that those at-risk residents that we value as well stay safe. So I, I would just continue to add to that, that when our first responders are out there and our healthcare workers, they need to also be kept as safe as possible in order to provide those necessary services to our residents. And that's all I have for this evening. Continue the good work by many. So discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Just real briefly, I've got good news to announce and, but it tails on some, some, you know, news no one wants to hear. So great news, Saturday, finally, long awaited, the FEMA generator for city hall will be installed. So we will have power in emergency situations to city hall. We'll, we'll power the entire building, which is great. And the timing is wonderful because believe it or not, we are 26 days from the start of hurricane season.
And the timing is wonderful because, believe it or not, we are 26 days from the start of hurricane season. I know no one wants to hear that, but the reason I bring that up is because of this slow, methodical, well-reasoned approach to reopening and the long haul with our first responders and all the planning that has gone into and will go into the start of hurricane season. So again, we're in a marathon, not a sprint. And just want to also call attention, as part of your initiative, Mayor, the Welcome Back Businesses, Welcome Back Palm Coast Businesses. If you go to the Business Assistance tab, we've updated it again. We've tried to stay and remain current. Businesses can find some, I think, some extraordinarily useful information. There are a couple of easy-to-find guidance documents on what it looks like to reopen to 25%. What are some best practices in cleaning and sanitation? Beyond that, there's a place where we want to support you. And by doing that, we're asking you to create a case. There's an easy link, and we're going to try to do our best to do two things. One is to provide some PPE, Personal Protective Equipment Supplies. I know the Fire Department's been working on that. But also in a grander, you know, bigger scale, to that end, we have a donation that came in of 1,000 masks. So there's a place to submit a case, and we're going to do our best to distribute masks. And the reason we ask you to distribute a case helps us track where they're going. And if we can't fulfill your request right away, because 1,000 masks won't go as far as we'd like, when we get more, and we believe we'll get more donations, we know who and how to send those to. So super important, go there. You'll also find a lot of posters to help you print and, you know, if you want to put posters up about wearing masks or distancing reminders or stickers for your floor. So we're really trying to assemble a toolkit to help our businesses reopen safely, reopen more quickly. And then those last two initiatives as part of that, that I'd be remiss in not mentioning. One is, again, we discussed our plans. We've started proactive communication today by visiting businesses and centers on how to get assistance in opening a larger outdoor seating area. And then we're looking right now on ways we can vet and provide. There's a lot of scams, unfortunately, going on in times of crisis. And so what we're going to do is post cleaning, sanitation, and personal protective equipment suppliers that we know are trusted, that we know are vetted, and I don't have final word yet. We were hoping to have it today. That will also honor more bulk pricing, so you're going to get a good price, excuse me, and go through a trusted supplier. So again, the Business Assistance tab on our virtual City Hall, you'll find these very clearly posted, easy to access. And again, if you're looking for PPE or have other questions, please submit a case so we can respond to you. More importantly, we know what those needs are out in our community. So be grateful for that. Thank you.
But I'd just like to add before we adjourn. Tomorrow is our weekly virtual town hall meeting. I would be remiss to not recognize both Tyler, our communications officer, and Doug Akins, who have been running these meetings, our IT director. Great response from our residents. It's never too late to register and ask your questions. We have a panel of experts that are there and available each week to be responsive to our residents. And then all those questions are posted and answered online. And so we have, on an average, around 20,000 residents that are viewing our virtual town hall meetings. So it's a great way, again, to continue to communicate with our residents. It's an accurate way to communicate with our residents. We are getting this information that is up-to-date, accurate, from our experts on, again, how to stay safe, what our plans are, you know, when they can expect certain phases. And so it's a lot of really important information. So continue to tune into that, continue to stay informed, continue to stay safe, and we will all get through this together. Thank you.
Yes.